On Wednesday, November sixteenth, we will begin with first, or actually, before we begin, I'll propose a minor amendment to our agenda. Joe Borton is present. Never mind, I will not. We will move on to item one from our agenda, the opening statement from library director Nick Grove. Nick?
All right. Good evening, everyone. I've asked the board if I could have the first few minutes of this meeting to make a statement. And I appreciate and thank the board for allowing me to have this few minutes to address everyone that is here and everyone that is watching online. It is important to remind everyone, trustees, staff, and members of the public that there are laws and rules in place on how to, how a library district is to be run and how open public meetings are to be conducted. The library district has a code of conduct in place. We have copies available online and we have copies on the desk over where you walked in this evening. It is important that we abide by both the code of conduct and open meeting laws. Anyone unable to follow these will be asked to leave immediately. As former Idaho Assistant Attorney General Brian Kane said in regards to open public meetings, it is your ticket to the show of government and it guarantees your right as a citizen to observe your government in action. It isn't a guarantee to participate. On this note, I want to point out that public comment will not be included on our agenda tonight, nor for the foreseeable future. According to Idaho Code, the library board is not obligated to provide a public comment portion to their meeting. If you have a public comment and want it entered into the record, you can submit it via the form on our website. If your comment is about an agenda item, those must be submitted 24 hours prior to the meeting. Tonight, we have a full agenda with speakers Joe Borton and Peter Bromberg, presenting to the board information regarding public records requests and intellectual freedom. Before we go on to the consent agenda, our speakers and our monthly board business, I would like to address a few items. When you visit a Meridian Library District branch, you have the right to choose books and other items that you and your family want to borrow. Others do not have the right to restrict your access to these items. This has been backed up in court cases across the United States for decades. Neither I nor the board will put the library at financial or legal risk by implementing a policy that is not only contrary to our freedom to read values, but simply will not stand up to a First Amendment challenge in court. No amount of defamation or harassment in person or online is going to change that. If you cannot navigate the library to find content that meets your family needs, we have staff that are able to assist you and they're happy to do so. If you are worried about your, what your child checks out, you have access to see their accounts online. And I would encourage you to accompany your child to the library, help them find the items that they need. If they go to the library unattended and check out or read something that you have told them not to do, then this is a violation of your personal family rules. And I would advise you to handle that as you would any other violation of your family rules. For anyone not aware, over the past several months, there's been a small contingent of extremely vocal community members seeking to disrupt library services, book availability, and our library board meetings by talking about materials they think are obscene and do not want children to read. Obscenity has a legal definition in the Idaho Code and the materials in our collection do not meet this definition. The definition is not, I don't like it, or I'm offended by it. Shouting out that these things you would disagree with are obscene is patently false. You have their right to object to an item. You have the right to recommend a reconsideration of an item that you don't like. You do not have the right to ban books or segregate access to books that you do not like. On a personal note, I'm a fourth generation Idahoan. I've worked in libraries for over two decades. I have never seen this level of vitriol, hate, and thinly veiled threats of violence in libraries. This is the second meeting in four months where we have asked uniformed officers to be at our meetings for the safety of our board, staff, and patrons. I want to say everyone has a right not to read books they don't like. However, no one has the right to impose those views and limit the sacred freedoms of others. We've heard the request to restrict books loud and clear. The fact that they don't like the clear and straightforward answers that have been given to them doesn't change that answer. Finally, I, this library board, and our leadership team take great offense to the false accusations, lies, misinformation, slander, and defamation that is being thrown around with great abandon. Will not be bullied by anyone, period. In response to this continued harassment I have personally received, I would like to address a few things. No, I will not be stepping down and resigning. No, your empty threats are not having an impact on me other than anger and sadness. I feel sorry for you. And yes, I do believe that individuals and families should make their own choices on what they check out from a library. I've only been in this position since the end of July. I've been in this library for over 11 years now. I've been in libraries since October of 2000. Lifelong Idahoan, my kids grow up here. I'm not going anywhere. I will not be bullied. I detest these lies, this misinformation, and the hatred that have been attempted to pollute and degrade this community. With that, I would like us to go ahead and proceed with the rest of this meeting.
Thank you very much, Nick, and I know I speak for the full board when we appreciate, say how much we appreciate your leadership and your commitment to this community. All right, that brings us to item number two on our agenda, the consent agenda. We have a number of items listed. We have regular meeting minutes. We have some policy revisions, some job description revisions, and an updated salary schedule. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move that we can approve the consent agenda. Thank you, Laura.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Jeff. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to item number three on our agenda. We have Joe Borton with us this evening to talk to the board about the public records request process. Joe, if you would just join us here at the end of the table, if that's okay. Yeah, thank you.
Ready to go? Okay. So I'm going to talk about public records requests as they apply to the, to the Meridian Library District, kind of in a big high-level review of the process, the purpose behind public records, and the structure behind the requests and how you handle. So start off first by saying, Nick Grove, I'm so damn proud of you and stand side by side with you, and I appreciate your words and your message and you sharing it. So, very well spent. I've been doing legal work for public entities for over 20 years, the library district being one of them, counties and the public records law applies to each of these. So one of the initial questions we get, as you know, it certainly applies to the library district, but for folks that might be watching here in the audience or online, the public records request provisions in Idaho Code don't apply to, to private individuals or private companies or HOAs, for example. So it certainly applies to the Meridian Library District. And it's guided by Idaho Code Title 74 and your existing policy, which matches it perfectly. So they really marry well together. And both of them focus on the broad principle of balance. So the public records law is designed to provide all of the taxpayers and members of the public access to all the records and business, the activities of a public entity. And it balances that public access with certain legislative restrictions to protect information. Some information might be personnel information of individuals who may be employed by the agency. There's dozens and dozens of them. Some of them are, you know, trade secrets or, or investigative records and criminal matters. So the long list of exceptions, many of them don't apply to a library district, but that's kind of the balance. And when we do these presentations talking about public records law, there are very few bright line rules. And we present with that mindset that don't look for crystal clear definitive right line rules. We like the public agencies we talk to to, to review and consider every single request separately, thoroughly, objectively, applying Idaho Code and your existing policy. That's the practice that we do here at the Meridian Library District to make sure that every single request from a patron is handled the same way. And it's handled objectively and fairly, and it matches that balance that code and your policy tries to, tries to capture. So the process and your, your existing policy makes this crystal clear. Folks haven't seen it. It's on the website that outlines in a good summary form, the process that the Meridian Library District invites its patrons and, and any citizen to make a request. Those requests are done in writing. You're entitled to have that done in writing. It's done to a, a single repository. So for the benefit of the district and their ability to respond, as well as the benefit of the public, you know exactly who to give it to, to make sure you can get a response. Again, it's all designed to try and make public records truly accessible. Everything is done in the open. So that's what the process is designed for. So the written request comes in and again, the library policy invites and allows the designee to ask a question. Sometimes a patron might ask a, a question that doesn't really ask for a record, but you kind of get the gist of what they're asking for. So it's appropriate and, and it's happened here at times to say, I think you might be asking for this. We can only respond to what you ask for in writing, but if, if you're asking for this, you know, send that in and we'll certainly get you the record. The vast majority of them are relatively easy to respond to. The rule in Idaho Code gives you three business days to respond. A lot of times a response comes in a day. Routine records that might be really simple to, to address. But you have three business days to respond. Every now and then there's a request that might be complicated or might be asking for some records. Some are exempt and some might not be and, and you're allowed to ask for an additional seven days. So 10 business days in order to provide a response. Again, that's this balance, this trying to make it really easy for the public to get records of what the library is doing and easy for the public agency to administer that process in a timely manner. So I've got to use my glasses as I get older. I can't see. So one of the things that, oh, and then after those seven or three to 10 days, three to 10 days, the requestor gets a written response and you do this in every single case. We don't do phone calls with records and it's always a written response. It always explains, here's the records that were provided. If any of the requested records were, were withheld, there's an explanation that, you know, that record doesn't exist or it exists, but it's exempt and here's why. And then it also provides the requestor in every case, notification of their rights. So under Idaho law, if you make a public records request and if it's denied or withheld for any particular reason and you object to it, you can go, it's called judicial review. You can file a claim in court. And there's a really abbreviated process because the court wants to address that and resolve it really quick. They'll set a hearing within 28 days to determine whether or not that decision was proper or not. It doesn't happen very often in, certainly not here, but in, in other cities and counties, it comes up every now and then. And then a judge helps determine whether the decision to withhold it or find it to be exempt was appropriate or not. So again, those rights are notified or the, the requesters notified of those rights. And so what can maybe slow that process down a little bit is to my earlier comment about how we make sure each request is treated the same way and how it's always objectively measured against code. Sometimes requests will, will seek something that is allowed to be disclosed, but it also includes exempt materials. You know, there may be the, a personally identifiable information may be an example. So we need to review and re-act. Sometimes there's requests which are extremely large, extremely large. And in those cases, any agency has a right to say your, your request, we estimate will take additional time and resources to respond to. The rule, I believe it's a hundred pages. Here at the Meridian Library District is, is at no charge and two hours of staff time, but every now and then there's an agency request which requires hours of legal review and hours of staff time way beyond that. So an agency can say to the requestor, hey, here's, we think this request is going to require this time and incur this cost. You need to pay that fee upfront in order to request it. These aren't rules unique to the Meridian Library District, but they're rules that apply to any of the agencies. And sometimes a requestor may say, actually, I only need this little piece. I don't need, I didn't know that's how it worked, right? So I only need a little piece and I'm going to re-ask the question. And when they do that, we start over and we review the new question and under the same exact practice. And make sure we always get a response out in time and almost always within three days. We review almost everything legal does as a matter of course. Again, that's not unique to the Meridian Library District. But if anyone can't sleep and you want to read Title 74, Chapter 100, you'll see, I think it's 26 chapters. You'll see lots and lots and lots and lots of exemptions that apply to, good lord, a million different things, way beyond the library district. But we got to make sure that we review and any request in relation Idaho Code and make sure that nothing improperly gets improperly disclosed. That can take some time. And then we provide that response back to the, to the district, to Nick and, and make sure that gets out to the community member who's asking for it. Couple of, of principles with public records requests. It's an opportunity for the public to see records of the public agency. It's never an opportunity, nor is it an obligation for an agency to create a record. And that often gets misunderstood in a variety of agencies where folks want you to make something, right? Can you create a a record of salaries or a record of of real estate activity or whatever the agency might have. And that's not how, it's not what it's designed for. It's designed for the production of the records that already exist. So sometimes that'll happen and there'll be appropriate responses. There's not a record that we possess for that, what you're doing, but what you're asking for. You're asking us to make a record which doesn't exist and so that doesn't, that's not permissible. And again, these rules that we talk about and apply objectively, none of these principles were created and are unique to, in this case, the Meridian Library District. These are state statute provisions which you are subjected to like every city or county. So the exemptions that apply, for example, none of these are created by you. Whether you like them or not, they apply to you just like the city and a county and a, and a charter school and any other public agency. So once we get a chance to review those records, provide that response. Ninety-nine, 999 out of 1,000. This is just a regular routine process of running a public entity like you all do. So if there's one claim in 10 years that goes to district court, that's a lot. And I think that's a testament, especially for the library district. There's a testament to your strict adherence to Idaho Code and adherence to your existing library district policy, which I know you updated at, at least as recently as June of this year. You're always reviewing your policies. It's always a good practice to make sure that if there's any provisions of code which change, your policy marries up to that. So hats off to all of you in the effort to make sure that you continually run that process objectively. One of the prohibitions, you can't ask requestors, why do you want this? Even if you're curious, you just don't, you can't, right? It doesn't matter. So long as they're not acquiring information to do mailing lists, for example, you know, marketing that the state code protects all of us from folks trying to compile that. I mean, there's just no secret to it. So if it's a public record and it's not exempt, you can have it, right? It's the public's business and the public's material and we're all supportive of that. So hats off to you for implementing your policies objectively and fairly. And with that, I'll answer any questions you might have on the policy and, and practice.
Joe, questions from the trustees?
Go ahead, Laura.
Um, are public records requests public?
Yes.
What would be the benefit of? Because I've read that some entities do make their records requests public. Some do not. What would be the benefit of making public records requests and the responding materials that we provide back to the requestor public?
So it's not so much, I don't think I would frame it as a benefit or not a benefit. It's really whether or not the request itself is, it, once it's submitted, it becomes a record of the agency. And is there any particular provision in Idaho Code which says that type of document would be exempt? And if it's not exempt, it, like anything else that's not exempt, just gets produced. And I can't think off the top of my head of a policy reason because a request that gets a response, all the records that correspond to the request are public. So again, there's nothing within that request itself that I don't think would ever be exempt. Good question.
Thank you. Other questions?
So I have, I have one. And I, I hear that each request is reviewed and considered very carefully. So that, that's probably the answer to my question, but you talked about you get something from somebody and you're like, I think this is what you're asking for. I'm not sure. And yet you also want to be careful not to ask, why are you asking for this? So kind of how, how do you balance that dialogue with not stepping into, I want to know why you want this?
Yeah, great question. So the, the easy answer for me is just years of experience because you kind of see some similar types of requests that kind of dance around the actual document that they might be seeking. But Idaho Code specifically allows that conversation to happen. You're not, it's not a, a wall where you're prohibited from talking at all. And you're not necessarily asking, what do you want this for? We encourage folks, when that situation happens, to have the conversation. Again, there's customer service, big aspect to it as well, to say, it seems like you might be asking for this. Am I, am I on the right track? I want to make sure I can get you the records you're actually seeking. None of that requires to say, why are you asking for it? But you certainly can make that request. That's totally permissible. Because you're really, the, the goal of that is to, you're trying to help them be successful in their request. So framing it that way allows the patron to be successful and allows the agency to be successful too.
Thank you. Go ahead, Laura. That happens. And clarified, so requestor need to submit a request or can you go off that conversation?
I love the, it depends answer. It depends. Because here's an example. It might be a situation where the request comes in and you say, I, there's actually, actually not a document that's responsive to this. Now, you, you, you might be trying to get this. Is that what you're trying to get? And if they don't respond, for example, okay, we'll finish the existing request. We don't believe there's a document as written, right? Because we don't rewrite the requests. We don't choose the words they use. And, and it can be denied because there's not a record. And then we invite them to say, I think you're asking for this. You can send in another one. Again, it's really a customer service focus. You send in something else and ask for that might help you out. If you don't want to, you don't have to. And if they don't, and there's not a record, and it's not a record.
There's a term called paper terrorism where groups bombard organizations with requests and it uses resources. Is there anything in Idaho law that addresses that?
That's a great question and that's coming up more and more with certain publications. So Idaho Code is, is behind the curve in addressing that. In, in a different aspect of my life of litigation and in court, they call it a vexatious litigant, somebody who continues to refile and reapply and it's really for the purpose of, of harassment and nothing else. So I think you're going to find provisions in code coming soon to try and address that. One of the things that we all are, in addition to patrons of the library and, and parents and grandparents and is we're all taxpayers. And so what happens when requests like that come in, it's wasteful of resources and money, which nobody wants. And in one provision of Idaho Code that does address it is if an individual makes a request that is extremely large, right? Produce every record you've ever created since you started. And if response is, well, that's going to take a thousand hours and here's the cost. Idaho Code prohibits the requestor from breaking that up into a bunch of pieces, right? And that's a case by case basis, but you can't try and get around that by chopping it up. But I think code is going to be strengthened relatively soon, just to try and address that for the benefit of, you know, the patrons and the taxpayers.
Thank you.
Man, cheers.
Go ahead.
Can I, just to have Joe clarify, one of the biggest issues that we've had with requests not being able to be fulfilled is specificity in terms of timeframe. Could you address that a little bit more? Clearly in terms of what that means to a request and, and how, how that challenges a, a request from being processed properly?
So specificity as to like a date range of documents they want? Or what?
Correct. So without a date range, we, we have not been able to fulfill some because it, we don't know what they're asking for. And when, so we've asked the follow-up question of what would you like? Because we can't give an invoice essentially because we don't know, are we looking for a day's worth? Are we looking for 10 years worth? Because those numbers are going to be drastically different. But and how important the specific dates, the date ranges are on some of the requests that are made.
Yeah, no, great question. So it's appropriate for an agency, if they don't have a date range for a series of documents that are being requested, is you're permitted to presume that it's from the start of the agency's existence, which invites the conversation that, that this is, without a date range, extremely voluminous and our estimate of the time and cost necessary to do that is going to be X and it might be a massive number. So you, it's totally appropriate to invite that requestor to say, if you, if you have a range, that would be much more narrow. I can adjust what the estimate may be. It might be much easier and it might actually get you the documents that you're really seeking in the first place. All of that's appropriate. But if a requestor doesn't want to make that more focused request, then you're going to run through an analysis of what might be a very time-consuming and expensive process. Oh, and to that point also, if there's a, there's an estimate of a fee, for example, if it's $2,000 to, to provide these records, the, the clock doesn't start until the fee is paid. So if the requestor refuses to pay the fee, then the whole process stops. And I don't think I mentioned that before. So.
Thank you. Go ahead, Laura.
So if the fee is very large and, or the estimate, estimate for the fee is large and, and the requestor pays it. And I, I know as an agency, we would keep track of our hours for what it would take to fulfill that request if and probably this is more of a question for Nick. So if, if that estimate is, if we overestimated, so now
and probably this is more of a question for Nick. So if, if that estimate is, if we overestimated, so now do we refund the money back to the requestor?
As per Idaho code, you would refund uh, any, any overcharge um, based on what is your actual? Um, because at the beginning of the process, it is an estimate um, that could be over or under, um, but it, it is an estimate um, and actual hours um, performed. Um, or any legal services that are rendered um, would be refunded if uh, if an overage was um, charged uh, at the outset. And uh, a, an itemized um, invoice is provided for that purpose.
To, to tag on to that a little bit, um, it's, it's pretty rare when that instance happens. So um, again, we've got an objective process we use every time and it's an immediate review of the request. It's an, it's an awareness of, of the individual who's receiving the request that this is, this looks big and maybe problematic. And so usually it's an immediate conversation with legal and making um, even more, more focused than an estimate, really. I mean, it's a good faith belief of here's what we think it is, have you so much time? Let's talk back and through of what that expenditure might be. And then create. So the, the patron has a very realistic figure uh, based upon our experience, we've done some doozies. So we've got a pretty good idea how things can expand the, the, the efforts necessary to respond. So the estimates are pretty accurate.
Great. Thank you. Other questions? Go ahead, Josh.
Sure. Joe, thanks so much for the time. Uh, I have a question about what is off limits to the public as far as records in regards to human resources? And would it be a viable public records um, request? If someone were to say, hey, I'd like to have a roster of all employees, their current salary, the results of their background checks, if any were conducted and cross check that against say the registered sex offenders list uh, in Idaho database. Is that a viable uh, public records request?
So God, this is, you're, you're teeing up a good lawyer answer, right? It depends. So every request is viable. And I'm not being cute about that, but every request is viable in that it's a request for X from a patron and we review it. So um, and we never prejudge broad brush responses one way or the other. When you work for a public agency, your salary and, and your title is always public. You sort of give that up. Um, anything about um, background checks. That those are public records. There's, there's only a limited portion of anything from a public employee's perspective that is um, not exempt. Um, but what we do is we, in that exact uh, that exact scenario came up is you have to review the exact wording of the request and marry it up to, to what Idaho code says and the exemptions for uh, what a public employee can and cannot have disclosed. We review every time. That's exactly what we would do there. Uh, but there it, it's very narrow as to what comes, uh, what's publicly made available for a public employee. You bet.
Great. Thank you. Other questions? Go ahead, Destiny.
You bet.
Um, uh, to tack on to an earlier question, if somebody were to make a public records requests for the public records request, um, would that information include the name of the person who made that initial request? Um, or is that redacted?
That's a great question. The initial, my initial thought is there's not a provision which would remove that um, who the initial requestor is. And what they would get is not the responses to the request, but the, you know, the document itself of the request, yeah. There's a million scenarios, what ifs, which we love. But again, I think what's made the Meridian Library District successful on this front is everyone, we use the exact same process. We don't miss things and you don't make mistakes. Because we use this exact same process to make sure every time code is reviewed, even if we think we know the answer. Just to make sure, again, for the patron's sake, that it's done right.
Thank you, Joe. Anything else?
Just like to add one, one piece to that, just to have some clarity. So by having her um, making sure that we hit code, what, what I do when it comes in is I immediately forward it over to Joe and have him um, or his team take a look at, at this. Regardless of basically how simple I think it might be to answer, um, I, I get legalized on on every single one that comes through um, to make sure that I'm at least looking at even the most simple of um, ones that have come through to make sure that I'm um, following code and, and doing what is legally uh, required of, uh, of the Meridian Library.
Thank you.
We love that.
Well, I mean, I think certainly the library is all about customer service and access to information. So I'm not surprised that we do well here. Thank you, Joe.
Okay, thank you.
Shut my mic off. That brings us to item number three on our agenda. We have Peter Bromberg joining us virtually from every library. Hopefully. Welcome, Peter. Thank you for uh, coming back. Um, Peter has, has spoken with our board in the past. And it was a great discussion and presentation of information. We do have our most recent trustees that were not here for that. So I thought it would be um, great to, to bring Peter back and, and have that uh, conversation again. So welcome.
Thank you. Uh, really appreciate you inviting me back again. I will go ahead and uh, begin the screen share so we can dive in here. So I'll be talking tonight uh, about intellectual freedom. Oops, just trying to get my windows moved here and I can see everything. Um, from a public library board perspective. So I'm going to go through the objectives real quick so you can determine whether we've achieved what uh, we're trying to do here tonight. We're by the end of this, um, board members, the goal is that you'll be able to um, understand and explain the key elements of your collection development reconsideration policies. Um, why those elements are in the policies? We're going to also talk about the First Amendment and how it relates to policy and the application of the policy vis a vis challenges. That's already been touched on this evening. Um, and the responsibility of the library board to craft and follow policy that furthers the library's mission. Um, and that is also in compliance with the law and then potential and uh, legal and fiscal consequences for not following law or policy. Um, so what we're going to cover, and it's a lot, but I'll, you know, I'm originally from New Jersey. I'm coming to you live from Salt Lake City tonight, but um, when, when I recognize the times running short, I'll, I'll talk faster. Um, so current environment, um, what's happening in the country right now, uptick materials challenges? We'll talk about First Amendment law and libraries. Um, what is intellectual freedom? How it relates to your library values and policy, the importance of good policy. Um, your responsibility as a board vis a vis policy, um, and the challenges and risks of not following policy and law and time for discussion, question, answers, if you have any questions. All right. So I like to always set a little context first before diving into the, the details. So to set the stage, we're going to start way out here and then we're going to zoom into Meridian Library. Um, but in the United States of America, right? We have the freedom to think and believe as we wish. Core American principle, right? That sort of underlies so much else of how we operate as a civic society. American founding principles, our founders believe that, that um, these were bedrock rights that needed to be secured for our country and for a republican form of government to survive and prosper, right? Thus the constitution. Um, as far as the law, our courts have consistently said that the constitution protects the freedom of all Americans to believe, to speak and to receive information. The First Amendment protects our rights to receive information as well as speaking. Um, now the library is an interesting um, institution in the landscape. It is a nonpartisan institution whose mission is to ensure equal access to a world of information, ideas, perspectives for all Americans, right? And then that comes to the library board, the board's roles to develop local library policy, um, that then reflects the law and carries out the library's mission and, and um, for the benefit of everyone in the community, um, not just uh, the loudest people for everyone. Um, so that's just to try to put that in context, right? So moving on in terms of environmental scan, what's happening across the country right now? Challenges are on the rise, um, challenges to books. So um, groups that were organized to protest masks um, have re been refocusing on school libraries and curricula and increasingly public libraries as well. So like those networks formed private Facebook groups, et cetera. And once, once people were already connected with each other and the mask mandates kind of played its, played its course. Um, those groups were in existence already and for a variety of reasons that are outside the scope of this presentation. Uh, attention turned to um, books and libraries. Those challenges are focused statistically on diverse content, um, authors and topics related to LGBTQIA, black indigenous persons of color, black American history or what, and I have to air quote CRT books. Um, CRT books is often um, a broad term that includes anything by or about um, people of color. Uh, while book challenges are coming from the right, I do want to, you know, make sure the board also understands that meeting room challenges tend to come from the left and meeting rooms are also protected by the First Amendment. So that's not the hotspot right now, but it's always good to be um, aware of your, your meeting room policies as well and make sure that they're in good shape vis a vis the law. Again, in terms of um, what's happening, anti-access legislation is being drafted and introduced and in some cases passed. There were some passed in Idaho uh, last year as well as other states. And by anti-access legislation, legislation that is designed to and um, and, and in reality, seeks to restrict um, our access again to, to receive information or to speak or teach it. Um, there's also legislation um, that has passed and is also pending in different states to allow for civil and criminal penalties for librarians, teachers and board members. Um, and in fact, there are cases happening all over the country right now where police are being called on librarians, on board members. I was actually at a committee hearing today at the Utah State Legislature where a school superintendent was saying that the, the police showed up at his school um, to, to arrest librarians because a patron had complained about a book. So this is happening um, it all over the place. Um, ditto, there's legislative bans or limits on discussing or teaching certain topics. These challenges have been mostly in public schools, but are increasingly, um, we're seeing them in public libraries, Patmos, Michigan, Wyoming, Kansas. Are a couple of examples. The, this is from uh, Campbell County in Wyoming where um, police were called and actually the sheriff did an investigation um, uh, of, you know, the books that were being uh, you know, characterized as obscene. Um, the sheriff is quoted here saying, one would be hard pressed in a criminal prosecution to prove that the materials presented when applying contemporary community standards and taking them as a whole appeal to the prurient interest. So they looked into it and said, um, no, these, again, um, I think uh, Director Grove made the comment again, that there's nothing on the shelf that actually meets legal definitions of obscenity. And that is what Sheriff Stalkin also discovered. The Patmos Michigan Public Library um, defunded uh, itself, um, but well, the vote, the vote of the people, actually there was a, a second vote in November, there's two votes now where um, the people voted to not fund the library because there were LGBTQ plus materials on the shelf. Um, so that library may go out of business, um, because people didn't want books that addressed um, any of the topic of LGBTQ or gender identity on the shelf. In Madison County, Mississippi, um, a mayor withheld library funding. Um, and a quote, funding for this year was withheld until we remove what he called homosexual material from the library. Um, so again, uh, these attempts to censor what's on the shelves. And literally there was a story in the paper this morning about a, a library in Kansas that is going to potentially lose its lease because um, uh, a clause was added to the lease um, to basically remove any books that were divisive and it mentioned LGBTQ and race, et cetera. So like, what's a divisive book? I don't know, but the library may lose its lease because they wouldn't agree to that clause. Um, again, in Tennessee, there was some, you know, consideration of prosecuting librarians. So just again, by the numbers here, Penn America looked at books that were being banned in schools. This is just schools from 2021, the school year of 2021, 2022. Um, so you can see where the books were, you know, where, where the topics were. By percentage, forty-one percent um, uh, had prominent characters were people of color. Twenty-two percent directly addressed issues of race and racism. Uh, thirty-three percent explicitly addressed LGBTQ themes or have LGBTQ protagonists. Um, sixteen percent of those books were history books or biographies. And forty-two children's books were also removed from the shelves, including biographies of Rosa Parks, Martin Luther King Jr., Ruby Bridges, Duke Ellington, Nelson Mandela and Sonia Sotomayor, um, Supreme Court Justice. Um, so the majority of these books targeted have been works of fiction, but twenty-eight percent are nonfiction. And again, do include history books, um, essays, children's reference and informational works. So the reason I'm bringing this up is because oftentimes the groups who are um, seeking to ban books and even legislators that are seeking to ban books say we're, we, we don't want porn, we don't want obscenity. But we can look at, here's the actual data on what is being challenged and banned and removed from shelves. And we can look at this with our own eyes and draw our own conclusions about the veracity of claims that um, that what, what is being addressed is obscenity. Okay. So what we're allegations are porn obscenity. The focus really is not on that. It's on LGBTQ plus and BIPOC authors and stories. Uh, the materials being challenged, they do not meet the legal definition of obscene or harmful to minors. And we'll talk about both of those definitions. And thus they are entitled to the full protection of the First Amendment as protected speech. So again, in America, and we'll get into this a little bit more. The First Amendment protects speech. It protects things that are published. And there's only a couple of um, ex- uh, exemptions to that. As much as um, Mr. Borton was talking about, there's only a few exemptions from public records requests. First Amendment basically protects everything except, except child pornography, except obscenity as defined in a very narrow way. And we'll look at what those definitions are. Um, but we presume that material has the full protection of the First Amendment unless, um, so again, looking at just the last school year, um, over four thousand books were challenged, through over three hundred school districts were hit with challenges and over eighty-five organized book ban groups. So not just individual concerned parents, but these are organized and funded groups that are um, are motivating these challenges. So there's a question that'll come up that like, why, um, why are these books being challenged and, and um, and I just, this is one brief personal aside and we'll dive back into the data. But in nineteen sixty-eight, um, Charles Scholz introduced the character of Franklin as a new character. Um, the first uh, black character in, in Peanuts. Um, this is the first strip. Is this your beach ball? You know, he's playing with uh, Charlie Brown on the beach. And the second strip, he's meeting Linus and there's a shot of a drawing of Franklin sitting with Linus in the school. And people called up their newspapers and said, if you don't drop this strip with the black character, we're going to, we're going to drop our our subscription to the newspaper. And the newspaper's called this, you know, the syndicate to say, you know, you gotta get Scholz to drop this, this character. And of course, Scholz said no. But the question of like, why? What, what did people object to about these panels that you're looking at that they were going to cancel their subscriptions? Um, and I think the answer to this question is similar to what we're seeing today is the objection was simply the depiction of the existence of a black child and a white child playing on the beach, a black child and a white child sitting peacefully together in a school. Um, and I, I think that's, that's about as much editorializing as I'll do, but those are the conclusions that I've drawn for what we're seeing today. Um, very similar motivations. I can't come up with any other answers on why these books would be challenged. So um, how do Americans feel about book banning? Interestingly, the Deseret News and BYU um, who are, you know, which are both um, part of the um, Church of Latter Day Saints, um, Church of Jesus Christ of Latter Day Saints, um, put out the American Family Survey every year and they ask questions about book banning. Um, and according to the survey results, only twelve percent of Americans agree that books should be removed from libraries if a parent objects. Twelve percent of Americans. Okay. So again, when, when we hear loud voices and people coming, showing up at meetings and asking for books to be removed, they're in the minority. Twelve percent of Americans think books should be removed if a parent objects. Only sixteen percent of Americans believe public school libraries include inappropriate books on their shelves at all. They're just not there, right? Um, sixty-five percent of Americans said it was important for public school libraries to represent a variety of perspectives about controversial issues, even if it makes some people uncomfortable. Um, and the conclusion of Jeremy Pope, uh, who's professor of political science at BYU and a co-investigator for the survey, said the public really doesn't like book banning. Now, a lot of this is really focused on school libraries as, as opposed to public, because that's really where a lot of the challenges have happened. But we also know that people um, have even, even um, broader acceptance of things that are on the shelves in the public library. So if these numbers are really about school libraries, we could anticipate that we'd see even more support. Um, or less support for banning books in public libraries. So this is where we stand as Americans. Here on November sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two. So let's talk about First Amendment and public libraries. Um, I will give, I am not an attorney as Mr. Borton is. If he's still in the room, I can't see, but if you'd like to pipe in, if he has any, um, any advice on if I'm getting anything wrong. Um, but so the information provided in this presentation does not, is not intended to constitute legal advice. Please consult with your legal counsel regarding particular matters. Um, but here we go. Here's what the law says. So protected speech censorship in the First Amendment. Um, you may have heard You may have heard this phrase, the Miller test, which comes from a court case, Supreme Court case, Miller v California in nineteen seventy-three. Is the primary legal test for determining whether expression constitutes obscenity or is entitled to the full protection of the First Amendment and it's a three-pronged test. And there's an and here, this isn't, these aren't ors, these are ands. So the first prong of the test is whether the average person applying contemporary community standards would find the work taken as a whole, that's a very important phrase, which is why I bolded and underlined it, appeals to the prurient interest. So taken as a whole, does it appeal to the prurient interest? So we all understand what prurient interest means, right? Is it taken as a whole, is it actually designed to appeal to, you know, to our, you know, to, to basically to sexual interest, right? Taken as a whole, not a snippet, not a quote, not a paragraph off of page two seventeen, not a panel from a graphic novel. Taken as a whole, is it, you know, is it akin to what, you know, what I grew up, you know, in the seventies, what we would call a dirty magazine? Like, we know that's, that's why it's being published, that's what it is, taken as a whole, that's what it is. Is this book taken as a whole, designed for that purpose? And then two is whether the work depicts or describes in a patently offensive way, sexual conduct specifically defined by the applicable state law. So key phrase there is a patently offensive. And the third and is whether the work taken as a whole lacks serious literary, artistic, political or scientific value. Again, we have to take it as a whole, not a snippet, not a sentence, not a paragraph, not a panel from a graphic novel. We have to take it as a whole. That is what the federal First Amendment law says. And again, it's hard, this is a hard, I mean, there are some things that violate this and are obscene and don't have the protection of the First Amendment law. But by design, because this is America and we have that right to receive information, we want to err on the side of publishing and speaking and receiving and believing. Remember, the First Amendment also protects our rights of belief and religion as well. So we don't want to be chipping away at that. Okay, censorship that violates the First Amendment is when a government entity like a library suppresses ideas and information that certain persons find objectionable or dangerous. Again, it's a government entity. So Twitter or Facebook does not violate your First Amendment rights if they pulled something down. We might not like it, we might disagree with it, we can have public policy debates about that. We can vote with our feed and not use those services. But as not as, as private entities, they are not, they cannot violate our First Amendment rights. Only government entities can. Now, two, materials that fail the Miller test are not protected by the First Amendment. That determination is actually only made by a court. And courts will start with the assumption that speech and published materials, including library collections are protected. That's where the court starts with. It's protected unless you show up me otherwise. And Idaho statutes, like almost every other state in the Union, have language that mirrors the Miller test. And that's because states can protect more speech than the Constitution, but cannot protect less speech. That's how constitutional rights work. That's the first, you know, that's, that's our Bill of Rights. Those, all of our constitutional rights is a, is a floor below which states cannot fall. They can give us more protections, but they can't take away and give us less. Period. So harmful to minor statutes now, there is a recognition that, that, you know, we, there might be, we might need to protect minors and using a different standard. But harmful to minor statutes generally mirror the, the language of the Miller test with some qualifications such as with regard to minors tacked on. So for example, Idaho law, there's the citation there thirty-three dash twenty-seven forty-one seven B three. Taken as a whole lacks serious literary, artistic, political or scientific value as to minors. In harmful to minor statutes, courts will apply that with consideration to the oldest of minors. So if material is deemed valuable to a seventeen-year-old, the courts would say, well, you can't remove it just because it may be inappropriate for a five-year-old. So that's just how harmful to minor statutes are applied by federal courts. Now, what is intellectual freedom and how does it relate to the library? Well, intellectual freedom is the right of every individual to seek and receive information from all points of view without restriction. It provides for free access to all expressions of ideas through which any and all sides of a question, cause or a movement may be explored. This is the definition of intellectual freedom and censorship from the American Library Association. And intellectual freedom is a core value of the library profession. It's just embedded in the DNA of what a library is as an institution, right? We exist to provide that access to, to citizens to seek and receive information of all ideas. And, and we trust people to make those decisions for themselves and we trust parents to guide the, their, their children in making those decisions. So how is this reflected in your, your purpose and mission statement? Well, it's, it's kind of weave throughout it, right? In your purpose statement, you talk about equal access to information. In the Meridian mission there, igniting curiosity and cultivating connections. There's learning and helping patrons find what they want to know. There's inclusivity, providing access to every member of the community. So these, these concepts in the language of intellectual freedom are just built right into your purpose, your mission, your values, which I believe have all been passed legitimately some point by a duly elected board in an open public meeting. That's what good government is. And there it is for the public to see right on your website, which is also good government. So the role and value of, of good policy in terms of operating a library, governing a library is a policy, good policy should flow from and reflect the purpose and mission of the library. And it's, it's there to govern the day-to-day operations, right? So their staff, you have Nick as the director and their staff who are operating and they're going to look to policy, say, well, how do we actually run day-to-day operations here? We're going to be guided by and constrained by, by our policy. It's going to ensure compliance with law and regulation. It's going to protect the rights of all patrons and staff as well. And, and policy should reflect and does reflect the commitment to all Meridian residents. It provides transparency and standards and procedures. So any, if a member of the community says, well, I don't understand or what is the policy regarding this, thus and so, it's, it's on the website. So everyone understands, like, it's like, we've all read the rules on the inside of the box top. We all know where we stand with each other. There's no questions about Y, X and not Y. It's right there in the policy. So that, that helps to ensure due process, it ensures consistency of service for, for everyone. And policymaking really is one of the most important duties of the board, right? And, and therefore it requires full understanding and support of all board members. Yeah. Move on from there. I was going to make a comment about the board only speaks, you know, as the board, but that's, that's another presentation too. And I, I don't have any reason to believe you don't already understand that and operate that way. So as for the collection development policy, the, the library will, this is right out of your collection development policy, provide a diverse and inclusive collection that reflects a variety of information, stories and experiences, will provide a collection that anticipates the needs, considers public demands. I'm not going to read every word on every page, just in the interest of time, but will consider availability. So, you know, do we buy a rare, like a book if it's available somewhere else and it's something kind of esoteric? Consider the need for covering all subjects and viewpoints. Having a balanced collection, considering the appropriateness to the scope of the collection. And also looking at the unique nature of branch collections as well, as well, and also digital materials. So we might have things in certain branches because the local population there has an interest in this genre or these types of films or these types of books. And we might not have them at this branch. Of course, they're going to be available across the system. So just pulling out some key concepts from the collection development policy. Inclusive, balanced, right, variety, all subjects and viewpoints, anticipating needs and public demand, considering availability of materials in other libraries. And then also the Meridian Library District supports that is there to support the general mission of the library, the strategic plan, as well as the library bill of rights and the freedom to read statement. So that's also in your policy. So I want to talk about that, library bill of rights, which was passed in by a American Library Association in nineteen thirty-nine. Occasionally smalls will try to frame this as the library bill of rights. Well, why do we have a library bill of rights when we already have a constitution bill of rights? That's the bill of rights we issue. Now, so the library bill of rights reflects the principles of and incorporates the principles of our constitutional rights, right? It just puts them within a library framework. This was passed in nineteen thirty-nine. For any history buffs in the audience, you might know what was happening in the world in nineteen thirty-nine. Fascism was on the rise in, obviously in Europe and in Germany, but there was also some significant fascism that was on the rise in the United States of America as well. And there were calls back then, as there are now for restricting certain voices, certain perspectives, attacks verbal and otherwise on certain communities. And this was the context, historical context in which the library bill of rights emerged. So a couple of points, resources should be provided for the interest, information and enlightenment of all people of the community. Again, all people, materials should not be excluded because of the origin background or views of those contributing to their creation. Libraries should challenge censorship and the fulfillment of their responsibility to provide information and enlightenment. Libraries should cooperate with all persons and groups that are resisting the abridgement of free expression. And a person's right to use the library should not be denied or abridged because of origin, age, background or views. And in fact, we, you know, we believe that the libraries should not be, you should not be denied or abridged for, for any characteristic belief, right? We, we do place limits sometimes based on behavior, observable behaviors. And that's where the code of conduct comes in, but otherwise everyone is welcome and with open arms to come to the library, right? In terms of the policy on selecting, again, a lot of words here, I'm going to break it down a little bit here. But your policy is golden. I checked it. So you don't have anything to worry about. But you're looking for basically, is it good? I mean, that's what it boils down to. And there's different ways of asking and answering the question, is it good? Is it well-reviewed? Is it come from a trusted publisher or author? Another way is say, is it physically well-constructed? We don't, it might be very well-written, but if it's going to fall apart after three circulations, that's not good. Is it accurate? Is it timely? Is it valid, right? So, you know, a, a history book from nineteen eighty-five might not, you know, might, might describe the boundaries of, of Europe and Asia differently, right? I mean, so things like that or an astronomy book that talks about nine planets in the solar system. Like, so those books, we might not want to get them if they're, they're inaccurate or not valid anymore. Is it affordable? Obviously, cost discounts, we have limited funds. Somebody wants that book, it costs five hundred dollars, it's very esoteric, maybe not. Is it reflective of diverse perspectives, right? So the, what comes out of, out of publishing houses, as of a few years ago, it was only about six percent of what was being published by traditional publishing houses reflected anything other than like a dominant white perspective. So to have a perspective of someone, a person of color in their own voice, in their own experience, it was only about six percent of books. I think that might be up to about fourteen percent. So that means for a selector, if you want to have a diverse collection that provides both mirrors and windows, so mirrors, so that people in your community can see themselves reflected in books on the shelf, but also windows, so people in your community can through literature imagine the experiences or understand, help understand the experiences of other people. So that, that idea of windows and mirrors is very important. We may need to actually like, you know, look at other publishers outside of the mainstream, et cetera, and look at some finding tools. And then is it inaccessible or preferred formats, digital, print, large print, et cetera? Getting into your reconsideration of materials policy, which I believe has been updated just a bit since, since we last spoke. But here are the key elements from your reconsideration of materials. And this is all about due process, right? Someone is challenging something, we want to give a fair listen to someone's concern and then look at our policy and make, and look at the law and make a determination. So decisions regarding content in the library collection may implicate certain protections under the First Amendment. That's right out of your policy. And I think that this is wonderful because it lets members of the community know right away. This isn't about, do we like it? Do we not like it? Do we agree with you? Do we not agree with you? The First Amendment provides very broad protections. And we may not have flexibility to remove things because the First Amendment says we would be, we would be censoring in an illegal way because we are a government entity. We would be censoring materials and we're not allowed to do that. Two, the use of library materials by patrons is an individual matter. Again, right in your reconsideration of materials policy. You like it, check it out. You don't like it, don't check it out. That's your business. It's not our business. We'll help you find what you want. But you walk in the door and we're not telling you what to think, what to believe, what to discover, what to write. Responsibility for children's and teens' use of library materials rests with their parents or legal guardians. The library does not act in loco parentis. And in fact, we would not want the library as a government agency to substitute their, their judgment for a parent's judgment, right? I don't want the government talking, you know, telling kids what, that's what, that's a parent's role. We don't want to usurp parents' role. There's a lot of talk about parental rights and parental responsibility. Well, there you go. The library is a government agency. We don't step in and tell your kids what they should or shouldn't be reading. We can help them find appropriate, age-appropriate materials and we can help you as parents also identify things as well. Library patrons may object to selected library materials by completing the request for reconsideration form. Again, there's a form, it's the same for everybody that, that just ensures consistency. And that will then trigger a thoughtful deliberative process for reconsideration of the library materials identified by the library patron. Again, this is all right from your, your policy. Excellent, excellent. Just very well put together. Moving on, the director and the board reserve the right to compile multiple challenges to the same item and administer them collectively. And that gets to again, that, you know, we have limited time and resources and this is taxpayer money at play here, one way or the other, paying salaries. So being hit with, you know, one after the other, after the other can be very time-consuming. So if, you know, when it's appropriate, we can bundle those challenges together and administer them collectively. While someone may find a particular item offensive, selection of materials will be based on the merits of the material and its value to the collection. Again, we're going to look back at that materials selection policy, collection development policy. It's right there on the website for anyone to read. Someone can challenge something, they can say, I'm offended by it. And we can look at the merits of that material as judged against our open, public and transparent policy that's posted for everyone to see and make a determination. The requests for consideration are only accepted from MLD residents and for MLD-owned materials. Again, that makes sense just from, you know, efficient use of taxpayer money and, and staff time. And then that decision will be reported to the patron and writing by the director. And there is an opportunity for appeal to the library board of trustees within thirty days. You've got your appeals process in great shape. The standard of review exercised by the board in reviewing the appeal is, is two-pronged here. Is there clear and convincing evidence that the director's determination was not based upon substantial evidence or support? And you'll evaluate whether the staff's decision complied with the library's policy and selection criteria. That's all the boards are looking at, right? Did the staff make a decision based on policy and selection criteria? And did the director's determination base their decision on that? And then after consultation with legal counsel, again, very smart, the board will determine whether the decision should be upheld, modified or overturned, and that decision is final. And checking with legal counsel, just like Nick does with those public records requests is helpful because, because the First Amendment is very much implicated in these decisions. And again, this might not be a judgment call for the director or the, or the board. If you're, if you're, if you're choosing to remove a book, the First Amendment can come into play here and attorney needs to advise on that. Because public, this is getting into the weeds a little bit and I'm going to, we're just not going to get too much into First Amendment law. But public libraries are designated, are limited or designated public forum, which prohibits libraries from engaging in viewpoint discrimination. Again, materials have a strong First Amendment protection in a library and viewpoint-based removal of materials is prohibited in any public forum. So it's based on a viewpoint, can't take the materials out. But also based on content, regardless of viewpoint, is also prohibited unless the library meets this strict scrutiny test. Again, three prongs. Is there a compelling interest? And this is again, a compelling government interest. Is there, so this has First Amendment protection. So we're going to pull it, is there a compelling interest for why we need to pull it? Is it narrowly tailored to achieve that compelling interest? And is there no less restrictive alternatives? So there have been cases where public libraries have said, well, we're getting complaints. We're just going to put that behind the desk. And if someone wants to find it, they have to come to the library, they have to come to the desk and maybe they even need to know it's there. And courts have said, nope. One, there's really not a strong compelling interest. Two, that's, that's not narrowly tailored to achieve anything. And there are less restrictive alternatives than hiding the book behind the desk. So again, these are, these are, it's a high bar, but again, it's a high bar by, for a good reason. Because again, America, freedom to receive information, right? This is a core, this is core to who we are, right? Our first freedoms, right? So because libraries have this strong First Amendment protection in place, it is really difficult to demonstrate a compelling interest. It doesn't come up all that often and when it does, courts generally don't find that, you know, hiding the books or is, you know, passes muster. So what happens if you don't follow policy? And this happens. So you have these great policies in place and then I'm not saying it happened in Meridian, but it definitely happens in libraries across the country. It's happening somewhere tonight, I'm sure, where there's a great policy in place and a board gets a little intimidated or a director gets intimidated and says, oh, well, okay, we're going to pull that. But the policy, they haven't followed the policy. They haven't required someone to fill out a form, they haven't done the assessment as required by their policy. And that can lead to very costly legal challenges that frankly, you are not likely to win. And conferring with legal counsel for advice is really strongly recommended. I'm seeing all over the country right now, school boards are, they're, you know, sometimes they say, well, we're just going to pull all these books because they're being challenged. And then ACLU says, maybe you want to talk to your lawyer about that. And they talk to their lawyers and all the books get put on, put back on the shelf the next day. And they say, well, the ACLU threat- And they say, well, the ACLU threatened us. And it's like, well, they actually didn't. They just sent a letter saying you might be in violation, and you might want to talk to your board attorney about that. And the board attorney is like, hmm, no, put them back. Because if anyone sues us, we're going to lose, and we're going to lose big. So courts interpret not following policies unconstitutional motivation. So the second you deviate from policy, if there is a lawsuit, courts will look at that and it's game over. That's unconstitutional motivation. And again, remember that Miller test, there's significant legal exposure in removing materials, even temporarily. If those books, when taken as a whole, have any serious literary, artistic, political, or scientific value. Or if the work taken as a whole does not appeal to the Purian interest. I mean, if you've removed a book from the shelf, because if someone should, you know, blew up some picture or some quote from some page. And showed up at the board meeting and everyone got freaked out by it, and said, we got to pull that book immediately, and this is happening. Well, taken as a whole, that book doesn't appeal to the Purian interest, and you just pulled it. So again, a court's not going to look favorably on that. And that means there's going to be a judgment against the library, which means money, which means taxpayer money going to, you know, out the window. So with that, I'll open it to discussion and cut question answers. I'm going to stop sharing so I can see everybody and you can see me. As a matter of fact, I'm going to hide me. I know what I look like. Now I can see you.
Thank you so much, Peter. Appreciate that. A lot of excellent information. Destiny, go ahead.
I could see it in your eyes. Thank you so much for the information. As a new trustee, this was very, very valuable to me. Just a question to reflect what we've been hearing a lot of from folks in the room. Can you, can you talk a little bit more about why? Or if it would be acceptable for me to request, for example, I have a four-year-old and there are some books in the kiddo section that. If she opened it, I might be like, oh, nope, not today. We're not ready to have that conversation, right? Why would it not be appropriate for me to request that objectively, right? Nobody wants their four-year-old to look at this, for them to go ahead and put it behind a desk or put it in a room that my four-year-old cannot access.
Right. So, so I'm sorry, I'm hearing feedback in my own voice. I'm going to talk, let, no, if I talk quieter, I don't hear. Okay. So I, so I've been in libraries for thirty years. I was most recently the director of the Salt Lake City Public Library. And it is not uncommon at all for someone to say, hey, I found this book in the children's section. And I don't think it belongs there. I think it belongs in the young adult section. Or it's in the young adult section, and I think it belongs in the adult section. And we look at those challenges, and I'd say as often as not, we look and say. Yeah, you know, publishers had said this was maybe at this age range, but yeah, maybe we'll put that in the young adult section, not the children's section. And that happens all the time. And that's, that's, it's legitimate to put in that request for reconsideration. And in my experience, the libraries I've worked at and the librarians I've worked with have have come to that in good faith and have often said. Yeah, that that, maybe that shouldn't be there, we'll move it. Now, taking it out of the library or putting it under lockdown is then, now you're getting into, because in your judgment, you don't think your four-year-old has access to it. So we're going to restrict it to other people's for, so we're going to parent other people's children. Based on 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 your personal values, right? Your personal values are in place to parent your own children, right? And we, and again, we don't want to usurp the parents' rights. So there are people in the community, undoubtedly, who would say, no, I, I want my child to be able to discover that. Or again, looking at, you know, the mistakes are made and things you can, and the staff, the Meridian Library will look at that request for reconsideration. And look at the policy that the board has passed. And say, where does this belong based on the policy? And again, if the, if there's problems with the policy, that's where the board can say. Well, you know, the way our policy is written right now, we're finding that it's it's not working. So we can, you know, we can work to tweak that, to, you know, tighten it up or whatever. But again, you know, there's, there's lots of gray areas in the library about, does this book belong here or here? Do we give it this cataloguing subject heading or that cataloguing subject heading, right? And and those gray areas are tough to navigate, but that's where we're going to always look back to the policy that you as the board passed. And again, there's, there's that that due process in place, and there's an appeal to the board to make, also make that judgment of, did, did staff and director adjudicate that appropriately? So that's due process, like all the way down. Does that, did that answer, fully answer your question?
It did. Thank you.
Okay.
Go ahead, Laura.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Appreciate this information. It's very helpful. Mike, I have two questions. The first one has to do with, do are there policies in other libraries that address the time period between reconsideration requests? So a re- request was made in two thousand twenty-one. For regarding a book, and then the same, a similar request was made about the same title in two thousand twenty-two. So that's my first question. And my second question is, in in what instances are restricted areas used in libraries? Because they are, we, there are libraries that do have restricted interests or restricted areas. But they're specific to certain items.
Yeah.
That may be exclusive or?
Sure. So I'm going to try, it's it's late in the evening now for me, so I'm going to try and remember two questions in a row. So the first one is, yes, there are libraries that have policies that say things like, once we have ruled on on a book. You, we will not take this book up again for three years minimum. Or that someone, there's also limitations on if someone has put in five challenges, like they can only put in five, you know, so that someone can't come out, you have two hundred challenges. I don't think that's in your policy now, but libraries are increasingly adding those things to their policies. Again, so that you're not getting that sort of death by a thousand, you know, challenges from one person or a group of organized people. And absolutely, there are policies that are increasingly adding things like, we've looked at it, we're not going to look at it again for fill in the blank, how many years? Three seems to be a common frame, timeframe. As for the restricted areas. You know, I'm sure there are library, public libraries in the United States that restrict area access in certain areas. I think that's very uncommon. I'm not aware of any off the top of my head. And I visit and interact with a lot of libraries all the time. But it reminds, I think, you know, maybe that was more common back in the fifty, sixties, maybe seventies. There, there are items that might be restricted, again, based on. The, there, it's a rare item or a very expensive item. But again, that's not, that's not a topic or viewpoint restriction. And again, the First Amendment law says we can't do topic or viewpoint restrictions. We can do a restriction based on, this thing will fall apart if anyone touches it, and you got to put the white gloves on. Or this is the one copy of this that's literally like worth a million dollars. And, you know, it was hand drawn by Audubon. And so we have to put some restrictions around who and when and under what conditions that can be accessed. But that's not content based, it's not viewpoint based.
I was just going to basically echo exactly that, that the restricted areas that I have seen in IDOS libraries across the state as I've visited. The only times that has ever come into play have been specific rooms that have dedicated history. Local history typically, or if you go to the public library that is not publicly funded and catch them. Then they have the Hemingway Room. And so there are limitations on how many people have access to the room at a time. But that's more of a capacity issue than than anything other than that.
Yeah, the, and and time, place, and manner restrictions is the First Amendment jargon. We can place time, place, and manner restrictions on materials and meeting rooms, but not content viewpoint restrictions. Again, I'm not a attorney, I just play one on TV. Okay.
Chair. Peter, I have a question about in regards to censorship and the broad definition of that. And for example, let me just throw this out there. If, if patrons of the library would prefer that. Their children under, let's just say minors, anyone under the age of eighteen. They want to have more control over the books that are checked out by their children. And they propose that, hey, let's say we put a red star on any books that we think are, you know, contentious. Or we're not comfortable with, and here's this list. And any book with a red star, if our children want to check it out, you need to, as a library, get our parental permission to give them that right. On the face of it, it, that does not seem like an unreasonable kind of request to limit some access or ability to check out certain books. But would it be a true statement that that is a violation of law and illegal censorship of collection materials?
So I think that question might be getting a little outside of my scope as, again, not an attorney, but I would, I would sort of ask you back. Who's putting, who's deciding what books get a red star?
Yeah, let's just say that, you know, a public group wants to. End the request for reconsideration. They don't want to remove the book from the library. They just want to limit the access to minors.
So they want to, so so some group wants to. Put their personal judgment about what is appropriate or inappropriate on books in a public library that will then. Lead perhaps to some restrictions for other people. I mean, we, we have professional librarians, I mean, there's so many layers of vetting that happen. I'm not even started. You know, what gets published? I'm going to, some, I'm sorry, I have like ten, ten different responses to this in my head, and I'm going to try and like weave them together here. The short answer was, I think that in reality, that would be deeply problematic. I do, I don't think it would be illegal. I think it's, it could be within the board's purview to pass a policy to allow it, and good luck to you if you do. But I, there are, there are, you know, many libraries all around the country that do things like, say that that we'll have a juvenile, a J card or juvenile card. And these, and this card can only check out materials that are in the children's section. Or these, you know, so I, I now, as a librarian, I don't like that, I don't agree with it, but it's a legitimate policy choice. I don't like it. I would argue against it if my board wanted to do it. But it's a legitimate, you know, policy choice, right? So to place those restrictions. But that's based on not someone coming in and saying, well, I don't, I'm going to throw red dots on these books, but not these books, based on my personal value system. Because the books that are in the children's area are there because professional librarians, looking at. The policy that you as the board has have passed in an open, transparent and consultative manner in an open, public meeting with the community. Can, everyone can look at that and say, that's why this book is in the children's section. That's why this book is in the adult section, that's why this book is in the adult section. Because we have stand, and publishers also, when they publish, have guidelines of this is the age, you know, the the range of age appropriateness for these materials. So librarians look at that, they look at reviews, and they make professional judgments about where to put those. Also considering local community standards. So all of those factors were already in place. And again, there's a reconsideration policy in place where if someone says, I don't think that book or these books should be in that section, I think they should be over here. There is a, there is a legitimate, open, transparent process for any member of the community to go through, to make their argument. And for staff and then director and then board to look at that against policy and against law and make a determination about where those books should be. So did that, did I completely answer that question?
It did, and it brought another question in mind about policy development with regards to this J card as you, as, you know, a tool. That would potentially be at our, a board's disposal in policy development. So can you kind of flesh that out a little bit more or kind of expound on that?
No, I mean, I could. No, but no, not to be flip about it, but I mean, I'm not an expert in that. And there's, I mean, there's, you could look at a thousand different libraries and you'll see a thousand different ways of approaching this. And again, I'm, I, I am, I am not a board member or a resident of Meridian. I think that making those local decisions about what is appropriate for your community. Is appropriately made at that, at the local level. And again, I mean, I have my own biases and beliefs and, you know, professional considerations around that. That may or may not align with the way that you would go with it. But I'd say that, you know, there's, you can look at other libraries and how they approach that. I would say that, you know, from my perspective. You know, most libraries require a parental signature for any library card for someone under eighteen. Sometimes it's under sixteen, whatever your, your number is. But a kid doesn't get a library card without the parent's signature. And so the parent is agreeing to the fact that I'm, if I sign for this card. And and then in fact, oftentimes, parents hold on to the cards. So like, I'm going to get, have my kid have a card, but they're not going to have possession of it. So they'll check something out when I'm there with them or when I give them the card. And also the parents as sort of the owner of the card. Again, and not in all libraries, but in many libraries have the right to then check and see what's on that card. Since they're, they're, they have legal responsibility for, you know, fees and things like that, if the materials damaged or lost. And so there's other, other ways, again, we want to enable the parents to parent effectively. But again, that that idea of doing it in the least restrictive manner in a way that's not going to create restrictions for other members of the community. So I think, you know, having in place a policy that requires a parental signature for the card. For, you know, for, for, you know, help, helping parents understand what, you know. What, what are materials that are appropriate for their children and direct them, directing them to find those, et cetera. Are are ways that that I would suggest supporting parents and and children in their, in their learning journey together as a family.
Yeah, that sounds less like censorship and more like good parenting.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a a comment, and I also have a question, so just bear with me for a second. But I think this, this. Red, red star idea that we talked about, right? No, I, I understand what you're saying, but I think it's important to understand or to think about, you know, that kind of slipperiness of that. So back in April of two thousand twenty-two, this, this board received these letters of intent. And there was a list of fifty-four books attached to that letter of intent. We received identical ones from six of our, our concerned citizens. So those fifty-four books. Twenty-four were not even in the Meridian Library Collection. So of the thirty remaining. I'm sorry, I should, I should say that one of the things, they asked for a number of things, but one of them was to remove the following list of books. From the Meridian Library Collection for circulation to minors under the age of eighteen unless legal guardian approval and writing is obtained. So of the fifty-four listed, twenty-four were not in our collection. The remaining thirty, for ten of them, they gave no reason at all for why they should be restricted. Twenty had a reason given, the most common reason is Peter alluded to, we're seeing around the country, was LGBTQ content. One of those nine was the Captain Underpants series. So the notion that that was not on the list is not correct. And other reasons given were things like a perceived anti-police perspective, discussion of the Islamic religion was apparently not okay. So it just gets really tricky. Who decides, right? And apparently, they don't need to give a reason at all, right? So I get, I get very, very worried about that.
Yeah, I think in addition, there is a danger of stigmatizing books as well. So again, if, if the red stars are all going on materials related to LGBTQ. And again, I'd stress the point that there are age-appropriate materials or picture books, like Entango Makes Three, or Heather Has Two Mommies. Or like, there's, 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 that's age-appropriate materials that might reflect a non-traditional family. And and those families exist in your community. And for them to be able to check out a book that that reflects their, you know, their family. I mean, again, that's, that's part of what, you know, we want everyone in the community to be able to come and find a book that reflects them. And we, and we want everyone to be able to find that, that, again, that, that window is like, oh, I don't know anyone. That has a family with two moms or two dads or where the, there's a whole series of these books where the grandparents are raising the children, or it's a military family. But somehow the red dots are only going to go on the two moms and two dads books, not the grandparents raising the kids book and not the military family book. Even though they're all part of the same series of how families can look different. So that can then create that stigma, and that's also just something to be aware of.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Peter. To follow up on that in a slightly different vein. Could you explain in a brief overview? Why libraries are not able to and are not in the position of being, or would not. There's no feasible way to do a rating system and how the movie industry creates the rating system for movies. And it does not come from libraries or schools or any other agency.
Well, yeah, I mean, so, you know, a lot, we're seeing more calls for like an MPAA-style rating system. But it's really important to understand that the MPAA is a hundred percent private voluntary rating system. That was self-adopted by an industry, the movie industry and the movie theater industry, to improve their revenue in a for-profit marketplace, right? The government doesn't coerce, regulate, or force participation in that rating system. Nor do they enact penalties backed up by the power of the state for that rating system. In fact, you know, you'll see sometimes movies that say not rated. That's because people who make films can choose whether or not they want to get their film rated or not. They don't have to. And and I guess another point is that there, there are actually many levels of filtering and vetting that are already in place to ensure that materials and libraries are. You know, developmentally appropriate, like materials are vetted by editors. You know, developmentally appropriate, like materials are vetted by editors or selected um for age-based publisher imprint. So knowing what the publisher imprint is tells you. You know, is this, is this printed for middle grade, for elementary, for, for young adult, right? And then those imprints and those books are professionally reviewed. They're assigned things like Lexile scores, which help parents and educators and librarians identify and select books um. By grade and interest and reading complexity. And then of course, the library, based on all of that, puts it on this shelf in this part of the library. Uh, or that shelf in that part of the library with a full understanding, um, you know. And many people don't know, but you know, librarians do have master's degrees and children's librarians are often trained, not just in collection development, but in. Brain development of children and literacy development. Um, so understanding that as well as perhaps even understanding state education standards. Local school curriculum, um, local community standards. Again, all this is going into selecting books um and understanding now which books do we bring into the collection? Where do we put them? And with an understanding and a, and a thought for all of the kids and all of the families in the community. Fully understanding that this book, it might not be desired or appropriate or valued by this family or this child or this. But, but it will be of great value to this family over here. And the fact that someone on over here doesn't. You know, value that book or want it on the shelf should in no way impinge on, you know, the fact that someone else does value it. So rating systems, yeah, they get, they get really tricky really fast. Um, and again, there's so many different levels of vetting that are already in place to determine what should be in the collection and where. That, you know, the, you know, sometimes we don't think of that as, it's, it's not a rating system per se. But it's, it's certainly a, a tool that helps us under, to discover and understand, um, you know, what, what is, and, and make informed choices for ourselves and our families about reading materials.
Additional questions? Go ahead, Dustin. This, this is probably a Nick question. It's been so long since I've gotten a library card for my oldest. I don't remember. Did I, do parents sign for their children to get library cards?
Joe answer on this one. On the. Child, there we go. Um, and, and how it's signed up for. Um, but in general, yes. You, you do um sign for or, or you're present for it. At a, a certain age, you. You can at a certain age. All right, my backup. Uh, you can at a certain age sign up for a library card um without a parent present. Um, however, we will send a postcard to the house informing the um parental units that a library card was issued to their child.
And so as a parent, then I would have access to. You know, for my young kiddos, I would know what they checked out. I could get online.
Correct.
Make sure they're not being scandalous.
Correct.
Okay, so.
You have full access to um, see their entire account on what is currently checked out, what they have on hold. Um, and then you can also set it up um to pick up holds um from within your um household. So. You can have a note uh and connected accounts throughout your household to pick up for. If, you know, four people in your household have holds, um, one person can come in and pick it up. You don't have to. Try and wrangle three kids to pick up their holds um at the same time.
Perfect. So if I was really interested in monitoring what my children are reading. That would be easy to do. And if I didn't know what they had checked out, it would be because I was intentionally not looking.
Correct. You, you have full access.
Give me your opinion on that.
You have full access to see what they've checked out. Um, if you are not with them, um, you have access to see their account. And we have tools and resources available on our website and other was, other websites um that are not um. Services that we pay for that will assist parents in being able to uh understand what is in a book. What the general themes are, what the reading levels are and uh make suggestions uh on, on what other books. You know, if you find a, a great book that your child likes, um, or you like, you can find read-alike services. In some of the databases that we um and or the Idaho Commission for Libraries subscribes to and makes available to all residents of Idaho. That allows you to uh compare books and make decisions based on. As Peter was pointing out, things like Lexile score um. Themes, things like that.
Perfect. This, it sounds like it makes it really, really easy to parent according to my values and leave. Parenting up to other parents as far as what their, what their kids check out.
Yes, and we have a, a handout that is available for anyone to pick up at all of our locations and it is available on our website. And we're um doing even more to um expand how um. Those resources are more easily available and um, and understood so that um. It's easy to, to make use of those. And if anyone ever has questions, we're happy to sit down and explain all of those resources um to an individual or a family.
Great, thank you. Thank you. And Peter, I'm just going to keep going on this restricted one, but it's my last question. So. So we have a unattended child policy. I believe children under eight cannot be in the library without a parent. And so, and when, and we happen to be physically located directly across from a middle school. So we often have middle school aged children come over to the library after school because they love the library. Because their parents want a place for them to be without having a, you know, spring for aftercare and things like that. So um. And the parent would say, well, they, they don't check out the book. They just take it off the shelf and read it in the library and I'm not comfortable with that. I want you, library, to prevent my kid from doing that. This notion of the least restrictive option that you talked about is would the court say? You as a parent should accompany your child if you're not comfortable with them making their own decisions in the library or. I mean, what, how would we respond to that?
Well, I think first and foremost, the library is a public space. So. We can't restrict people. I mean, by policy you can, like, and you have said, if you're under eight, and, you know, some libraries have that age higher. There's no right or wrong answer to that. But other, but short of that, that, that age restriction um for unattended youth. We're a public space and libraries cannot say, sorry, you can't come in. So I also understand from a parental standpoint, people, parents may have, be working and the kids at, at school across the street and. But, you know, this is not a library problem. This is a. Kids exist in the world outside of their parent supervision at many hours of the day and many situations. I would suggest that the library is, is one of the safer places for them to be. And uh, and again, I, I think parents can instruct their children. That they are not to look at books, they can go to the library and hang out or do homework, but they are not to pull books off the shelf without, unless I'm there as a parent. And that is a family rule and parents have the right to set family rules. And if their children are not abiding by their family rules, that is a family, that is a parenting issue. That is a, how do you address your children when they are not? You know, abiding by the, the family rules that you have set. So that's a family rules issue. It's not a library issue, just as if you said to your kid, I don't want you going to the seven eleven. I don't want you crawling through the sewers. I did that as a kid. You know, I don't want you, you know, riding your bike down that road. I don't want, well, you know, kids do all those things and then they get found out and they get in trouble. Or they're like a good kid like I generally was and they don't do it and they, you know, but again, it's not a library issue. This, you're a public space. Um, kids do all sorts of things in public spaces and that's why. Parents, you know, set guidelines and rules and have conversations with their kids about consequences for. That and parents can tell their kids not to check out books or look at books in this section or at all, if I'm not there with you to do it.
Thank you. Further questions for Peter? Right. Well, we thank you so much for being with us tonight. This is fantastic information and I think it's really important for the board to understand these principles. Because we are charged with setting policy for the library.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Kind of just, and you're doing amazing. Your policies are incredible. And I looked at a lot of library policy. So, and thank you for inviting me back. Really appreciate it.
Okay, when my mic comes back. So we will move on now to uh item number five on our agenda, which is the approval of our September twenty twenty-two financial reports hanging in there, Emma. So we did, did have a complete set of reports in our packets and I believe. Oh, I'm sorry. I was going to say something incorrect. Um, so we did have a complete set of reports in our packets. Um. Additional comments to add? We had your report as well. Okay, thank you. Uh, anything to add, Laura?
One of the things that I think we're going to, to consider moving forward is really our, our financial policy talks about um. Really, the board approves bill payments, not the, the financial statements. So in the future, moving forward, we're going to uh request that. We'll be approving um. The bill payments for, for future agendas. And I think I, we've talked about that. So. But that was something that I think we should change. Based on our policy.
A quick point of clarification, the, the disbursements are included in our packets, but I think it's clarity on the agenda of what we're actually doing. Yep. Thank you. For questions for Emma? Or I'd entertain a motion. Prove the financial report as presented. Thank you, Destiny.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Jeff. Further comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number six on our agenda is the director's report. We were provided with a. Written report in our packets along with all of the departmental reports and fabulous pictures as always. Things to add, Nick?
I do not have a bunch to add. Um, but I will take this time to um speak to a couple of things. Just as general updates and um to provide some um information on um benefits. So. The, the first big update that I have is the announcement that we have a new assistant director. Um, and uh Tricia, uh, just passed her last name, uh, other last. Previous last name, there we go. Tricia Mick uh will be uh beginning as our assistant director. On December second for onboarding and then um we'll begin that onboarding process through the month of December. So um. For some of you, that name may sound familiar. Uh, Tricia did work for Meridian Library for a number of years uh before. Moving over to the Boise Public Library where she was um a couple of different positions, but ended up as the. Branch manager at um Colne Eustick and then uh moved over to the Idaho Public Television um where she is. Doing an amazing job doing outreach across the state for um the, the efforts that Idaho Public Television is doing. Especially in regards to children and STEM. So we are excited to have her get back and I'm excited to have an assistant director.
Nick, do you think it's you or our acting assistant director Audra that is more excited about this higher?
I, I'm pretty sure we're both equally uh happy about this, so. And then. The, the other big point that just wanted to kind of give some high-level pieces because it is this time of year. We are, we have gone through, reviewed all of our uh staff benefits and um have signed the agreements and open enrollment for staff will begin. And I'm going to do bad on numbers uh next week. That sounds right. Sorry, I can't do math on, on dates. Brain's a little fried for the evening, but um. One of the, the biggest things that uh just kind of at a high level, we are changing a number of our uh carriers for um. Things like dental and um vision and. See if I can easily read um our. FSA or HRA, I should say, uh, a number of those items have changed. Either because we found a vendor that would make life much easier on the backend. And also provide better long-term benefits for staff. Um, but one of the biggest things that we were able to do was. We combined a lot of the services under one provider. Um, and by doing so, we were able to maintain the exact same level of service or in some cases increase the level of service. But uh dramatically reduce the overall cost. Um, so our out-of-pocket cost for benefits has gone down. One point seven percent. Um, so it's a reduction of um ten thousand dollars projected. And we were able to also add in additional benefits um as well. So um, we did lose one benefit, but it was all, was only utilized by two people. There was a third. I was one of them. It was an awful service. I jumped out of it because the company just made it impossible to use. You didn't get your money for childcare. It was awful. So we dropped that one. But we added three new ones um in its place um that took on other um aspects, but um we were able to um. Maintain the coverage that we had or improve the coverage that we had and reduce cost. And we're looking at additional ways that we can provide benefits to um our staff. Who work at all levels um from fifteen hours up to whatever Audra and I put in in a week. So. And then uh, I guess, just to kind of give a. An extremely brief overview on capital projects because there's not a whole lot to report other than Orchard Park is moving forward. We're making progress. Uh, I just heard today that the uh concrete floors look um. Fantastic. And so um I might take a brain break tomorrow and pop over and take a look at them. But uh, I'm hearing great things. We are looking at Travis, is it still in the room? No. Can see if you give me a thumbs up, but last I heard, it's a moving target. We should be able to start moving items. In um at the beginning of January is the most current. Number. So um, we're not going to put a firm open date on uh that branch yet until we start moving things in. Simply because having done that with the last two Unbound projects that I was in charge of. I do not want to have a firm date that I have to try and like rush to get to. So until we have. Some, some more clear um ideas of how long it'll take us to move in, set up, we're not going to have that firm open date um established uh right away.
Thank you. Questions for Nick? Yes, go ahead.
Adam Chair, uh, Nick, I have a couple of questions. One of the things I noticed was some really fun programming um for youth services. So is, my question is really twofold and it kind of piggybacks off what we just finished. Um, what uh? To what extent does public um requests drive our programming? And then um what percent of our collection development is determined by public request? I don't know if you can pull those off the top of your head.
Sometimes I'm like, this sounds like a, a perfect thing that I should be able to pull off for like random trivia facts, but this is not one that I have uh. Lodged in the top of my brain, but I can report back to you on that for next month. Um, I, I can tell you. Uh, another random number that I know, uh, which is that we do order eighty-five percent of books that are requested for purchase um by the public. So if somebody wants to add items to our collection, we do add roughly eighty-five percent of those uh on a year-to-year basis. But in terms of public input on those, I, I'll, I'll try and get those numbers. Um. Might be a little tricky on the first one with programs, but we, we do have a continuous feedback um in evaluation of our programs to try and um meet the. The changing needs um of our community.
And for anybody online or in the room, um, that. Form or process to request an item is right on our website, isn't it, Jeff? If you are looking for an item that is not in the collection, that's really easy to do. All right, we will move forward then to item number seven on our agenda. This is the board bylaws. As you may recall at our last meeting, we had uh. A brief discussion on the bylaws and the opportunity for the. Board to talk about changes that they wanted to see therein. We had no changes to make, so this item has come back for us tonight for approval. As is without changes. So our current bylaws would stay in place. Comments, questions from the board? Or a motion?
I move, we approve the board bylaws as presently constituted.
Thank you, Jeff. Second, thank you, Destiny. Further comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to item number eight on our finance, is on our agenda, which is our financial policy, not quite as. Straightforward because we did have a, a red line document in our packet with some proposed uh tweaks to the policy. So hopefully everybody has had a chance to read through those. Uh, Emma or Nick comments on that?
So a lot of the, the red lines that you see in your document um are cleanup pieces just to make the um policy read a little bit more clear. policy read a little bit more clearly and to update it with current best practices. The reason that we did pull this out of consent agenda and have it as its own agenda item is because there is a significant change. And and that change that we have in there is moving the the capital threshold for how we determine an item is either a capital item or not a capital item. We have it currently set at $1,000. That is something that our auditors have expressed to us is extremely low. We checked with other libraries in the area. And the the general consensus is $3,000 to $5,000. Essentially, what that means is our capital threshold being at $1,000 means that we have to credit a let's say, a really fancy garbage can or something as a capital expense versus what it's intended to do, which is, you know, we we shouldn't have an asset tag on something of that nature potentially. You know, it's designed to track larger purchased items like an expensive computer, a 3D printer, a TV, things like that that have that high value. And so that is why we pulled it out of the consent agenda so that if there was further discussion that it would be easier for you all to have in that regard.
Thank you. I think that that is a very sensible change. Go ahead, Laura.
I I agree with that that change as well. One, one of the things that I'm concerned about in the current policy is is the separation of a separate credit card statement for the director. It it creates more issues in terms of then having to track different statements and the the way the policy reads is that it is received through the mail when everything else is received electronically immediately. To me, that is something that we we need to address and perhaps eliminate that, you know, the director should have a P card. However, it should sit within the accounts of the other P cards.
Thank you, Laura. Just to follow along, if you have it in front of you, trustees, we're looking at the top two paragraphs on the second to last page where it talks about staff members who frequently make purchases for library events. So this change was not redlined in in the document that we have, but it may be possible to do it here in this meeting. Otherwise, we'll bring it back next month, but and help me out, Emma, if we were to strike the library director's credit card statement as received through the mail and say all staff members issued or issued a card that utilizes an online platform, would that be sufficient to address Laura's concern?
So we could, if I could jump in real quick, there, we already have the process in place with the online system that we currently use for managing all credit cards and credit card purchases for the district. And part of that is an approval process from an employee direct supervisor and allowing us to essentially use that system with those statements coming directly to you for my purchases would be an extremely easy piece and it would be a non-onerous step. I would highly encourage it and would be more than happy to make that step, but did not feel comfortable making that change without you all weighing in and and leading the charge on that direction.
Thank you, Nick. I'm all about non-onerous procedures. So if we were to strike that sentence, I my question is, would that be sufficient to to achieve the goal that we've talked about here? Thank you. And then just one final question slash comment, the the third one sentence paragraph there says charges are reviewed each month by the library director. Does the treasurer remove, review the director's charges or does he review his own to treasurer it is? Okay, great. So I wouldn't make a motion to, I'm sorry, before I get ahead of myself, any other questions or comments on the financial policy?
I'm sure I have a question about the if we change the baseline for capitalization costs and raise it to something that would make sense to most reasonable people. Do items that are above that threshold automatically? I'm trying to figure out how to say this. Is there a recapitalization cost budget for future replacement of those items that are perishable or will wear out that met the threshold of being a capitalized cost, but we know will not last forever?
To answer that in the best way that I can, and I might have to have Emma jump in, but essentially you can set with Idaho code and with our policies, the ability to depreciate the cost of an item, which allows you to have a set timeframe for the I can't say the word, so I'm just gonna say it allows you to move on from an object at a certain period of time, once it has reached its accrued value as set by what it is and what that replacement cycle. So like, for example, a computer used to be like a 10-year replacement cycle on a computer. That is now allowed to go down to three to five years. And so that is a typical replacement cycle, but that allows us to depreciate the value of that capital object over the course of that expected lifespan, barring you know, something spectacular happening to it in between that time, like being dropped on the ground or something like that. And that that does not constitute the replacement that is, or the it does not count towards the decapitalization of that object as a replacement of that object. Do I mostly get that correct?
Well, that makes sense. I just want to make sure that if we adjust that number upwards to more, you know, appropriate level, there is no downside. It is all upside.
No, there is not. It extremely streamlines that threshold of $1,000 between $1 and $3,000, especially with inflation costs and the, you know, increases of everything over time. That $1,000 mark is very easy to hit and it makes what we can spend money on as allocated in our budget process much more difficult. So if you buy a computer and it is $900, you can put that into the operating cost of the 522 point three budget line. And that allows, we we schedule a lot more there. Now, if that currently, if that item costs $1,100, now you're dropping down into the 722 0.3 budget line. That is a much higher threshold and it takes a lot more planning because those are typically things that are specifically called out for the next fiscal year and are budgeted for exclusively for certain purchases. But by having a low threshold for what constitutes a capital object, it makes it very difficult to do some of those in your purchases that are not specifically budgeted for, you know, if you were gonna, you know, we we're gonna budget for a large, let's say, security camera system. We know that's coming in X fiscal year, therefore we're budgeting X dollars. But to replace like three computers and now they hit that $1,000 threshold, now you might mess up your entire budgeting process for the fiscal year. So it it creates way more challenges and the downside is not there. It also cleans up our auditing process for our auditors.
Right. I I think based on my, because of the industry I'm in, in real estate, capitalization cost is a vastly different thing. So what I'm getting at is, would it not make sense to increase that number to, let's say, a $10,000 number? Would that create streamline and make it more efficient for budgeting purposes?
I would not recommend that at this time. Jumping from one to 10 would be a large number. It's something that is in your purview. I would guard against that and review that again at the next review of the the financial policy. Though to summarize, since Emma is not on a microphone and if I don't know if we have people watching online, but essentially, we proposed the $5,000 benchmark number so that we could be in line with industry standards in our area and throughout our state.
Right, then I would make a motion, if I may, that we will approve the financial policy with the additional additional edit that we discussed a moment ago, which is to strike the sentence about the library director's credit card statement being received through the mail and say all staff members are issued a credit card, et cetera. Is there a second? Thank you, Laura. Further comment? All those in favor?
I.
I. Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to item number nine on our agenda, the tiny library. We did receive an excellent document in our packet talking about lessons learned and quite a lot of detail for the tiny library. I think when this item came up, part of our discussion was was kind of a strategy one, a strategic one. Is this a model that we could deploy deploy in other ways around Meridian to increase library services? I think that that's an important topic that deserves a robust discussion. As the hour grows late with the board's permission, I would like to table that item until the December meeting or possibly the January meeting. Our December meeting is the week of Christmas. So if not all the trustees are here, I'd hold off on that one until January. So we'll see. It's seeing no objections, then we will table item number nine. That brings us to item number 10, boarding meeting technology. Nick?
All right, I will keep this quick and simple as best I can. I've been told all day today that I'm a little verbose, so. So the essentially, this boils down to a couple of different things and just wanting to get feedback and and potential action item or action on some of these discussion points. But for the meetings, we we have upgraded our audio and visual equipment. Believe it or not, if you haven't been here before, this is an improvement on our microphone setup. We're still getting there. But with the camera setup, with the audio setup and the move back to Zoom, we have the option and the ability to live stream these not only through the Zoom link, but on to the Meridian Library District's YouTube page, at which point we could cache it on that page and allow people to watch this at a later date. This will give people a a better opportunity to see what we are working on in times of challenge to be able to easily see what we are experiencing. And it provides a level of transparency that I think that would would be would benefit. Don't mean to say behoove, would benefit the community. Other questions that I had that really is more feedback and being able to improve the the in-room and online experience for the board and for the public. So really just questions on things that we tried, need to try, or things that you would like us to improve. That being the addition of the the TVs, the switch back to Zoom from WebX, the camera, microphones, you know, we got to have some changes. And then using, you know, when public comment is resumed in the future, the use of technology to limit that comment section to three minutes and and how we tried to use it last time and what you would like us to do moving forward. So really discussion points with the action point for the agenda item being to take the next steps in setting up and and moving to the YouTube platform for live streaming without having to log in and the retention of the meetings on YouTube. With that, I would also put a caveat, if you do vote on that, we will have our retention policy for all items. If Josh, Destiny, you have not had the advantage of looking through that, that is 16 pages of fun that you are in line for. So you ready? It's a good one. But we will, we can address adding that in and being able to fully address the longevity and the mechanisms around that that recording process at that time.
And so I I would just say for myself, well, actually, I'll wait. Go ahead, Laura. Okay. Okay, I would say for myself, I I support the live stream on YouTube and the caching of the the videos on YouTube. And you addressed the question that I was gonna ask around records retention. So but I, again, just kind of coming back to that theme, access to information, customer service, openness, transparency. That's what we're all about. So I'm I'm very supportive of that. I I think the technology we have made very significant step forward back in the day. So I I love the improvements and I think it's working well, that little little bit of a challenge with the mics, but I think it's it's a big step forward from where we've been. I think the countdown clock is great. It's a great visual. I need to adjust myself in in working that, but that's that's an easy fix. So other comments?
Adam Chair, so Nick, how if we go to the YouTube Live, we will still be able to use remote presenters like we had tonight via Zoom? Is that correct?
Correct. So with that, there is a and then a really easy crossover feature in Zoom, so people can still access and use the Zoom connection the way that we are currently using it. We can bring in our presenters. We can keep anyone who's not presenting not on the presenter list, but the option, it's would be the exact same as what the City of Meridian does for their for their council and for their commissions in terms of how they livestream. It's much easier as a a non in-room participant to actually go to the YouTube video. It's just a cleaner way to experience it if you're not interacting. And so I I think that it's a clean way. It essentially is a couple of clicks, it'll kick it over there. It'll livestream. Once the livestream is done, the recording is there.
Thank you.
Chair, just a comment in regards to YouTube, and this is more for the benefit of the public and the people that are potentially watching now. The greatest benefit is that on YouTube, you can change the settings to go to two-time speed. So a two-hour meeting only takes an hour.
Great point, Josh. If only we could do that here. Any other comments or I would I guess to formulate a motion, I guess, is to move to the live stream option with caching. So I would entertain a motion to that effect.
I moved to the live stream option to stream our meetings. That was so bad. It was fine.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Josh. Thank you, Laura. Further comment? All those in favor?
I.
Opposed? Motion carries. So that brings us to our 11th and final item on our agenda tonight, future agenda items. We already talked about bringing back our tiny library item. As Peter Baumberg was talking about meeting room policies and and challenges on the left, I I believe it was Joe Borton that talked with the board in the past about meeting room policies and limited public forum and so forth. And again, for the benefit of our new trustees as well as the public, I think it would be great to to repeat that discussion as well. Other items from the trustees?
Go ahead, Justin. That conversation also brought up a couple of things for me that I I noted. He made it sound like we don't, and I don't know if this is accurate or not, but we don't have a policy about how often folks can challenge books. He said that some libraries have, you know, an every three years situation or that they can only challenge a certain number and whatever time period. So if we don't have those policies in place, I would be just interested to know if there's interests on the board to kind of talk through those and maybe explore that as an option for.
So, sorry, go ahead. So, sorry, go ahead.
So what we can do is, that is part of our collection development policy. It is in line to come up next for discussion. And rather than putting it on to the consent agenda, we can do the exact same thing of what we did tonight with the financial policy. And so by taking it off consent, we can have further discussion and the ability to make suggested changes and edits to it versus if it's in consent. So I would recommend that we do that, and then we can get into a little bit deeper dive. And rather than having that play out now, we would be able to play that out and have an open discussion here at the board with that policy, those changes, and some other recommendations that have been made from experts that I've been to tapping into over the last couple of months, as this is a hot, hot-button issue across the states.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you. Yeah. And and again, for the benefits of folks in the audience and our listeners at home, the the board does review all of its policies on kind of a rotation, so they all do come back to us periodically. We don't necessarily make changes every every time in that cycle, but there's always that opportunity. Anything else?
We, we, Adam Chair, we do have a speaker lined up to come and speak about social media. And we will also have our social media policy reviewed at that time as well. We've had the speaker speak in the past, and so we're excited to bring her back, introduce her to the two newest board members and get some additional insight on the things that I don't like to think about, which is social media, so.
Well, thank you, Nick. I mean, again, I think it's really important for the board to have these context discussions, these background discussions, because, you know, one of our primary charges is is setting the policy for the library, so I appreciate that. Anything else? Seeing none, it is 9:12 and we are adjourned.